Testing. Testing. Hello? Is it working now?
Yes.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. Roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, thank you, board members. We approve our agenda for this evening's meeting. Let's go down to item A under two, recognition. Mike?
Members of the school board, audience members, we have our first item of business this evening is to recognize students and to recognize a New Mexico Teacher of the Year finalist. So we're going to recognize one student or several students and one teacher. I'm going to start with the teacher really quickly before we go on to the students. We had some exciting news come to us a few weeks ago. We had several teachers in our district that received a score of what we call exemplary as a teacher in our school district, and they were all invited to the state recognition dinner at the state level. And during that time, those teachers could apply to be recognized as the New Mexico Teacher of the Year. And several of our teachers did apply, and one of our teachers actually became a top four finalist. And so we want to recognize Mr. Ryan Hernandez for being one of the 2019 New Mexico Teacher of the Year Final Four called Super Finalists. Mr. Hernandez. Now it's time for the students. We appreciate our teachers and all they do, and we take time to recognize them as often as we possibly can, along with other staff. But tonight, our main event, what we'll call it, is for our students. We appreciate these students in this audience, all of our students we appreciate, but these students in this audience, along with our last school board meeting, accomplished something that most New Mexico students do not accomplish. They scored what we refer to as an advanced score on the New Mexico State Test. We call it the Park Exam. And it's quite an accomplishment. This test is not easy. Many of us, when we were in high school, we took a state test, and I'm sure we had a lot of fun taking that test like these students did. But this test, these days, in New Mexico, is one of the hardest tests in the country. It's actually two grade, it's the, I guess you'd call the level of the test is two grade levels higher than what it used to be. And so these students not only performed at that level, but they surpassed it with an advanced score. So we are very proud of them and want to thank them for their hard work and their efforts. They have been a part of the greatest growth Gallup McKinley County Schools has ever seen in its history. We had the most growth. We're the leading district of the top 10 districts in growth in the state of New Mexico. We actually put a little bit of data on the back wall for the parents and students to look at a little bit, maybe on their way out, or they can break their neck right now looking backwards. But the graph on the left, it's blue, that's the growth of the top 10 largest school districts in the state of Mexico in reading. The pink line or the peak bar on the graph is Gallup McKinley County Schools. So we've by far outperformed other large districts in the state. Congratulations. And if you were to extend the reading scores, even if you combined it with last year, the year before's scores, we'd still be number one. On the right-hand side is math. We came in third in mathematics in growth this last year. If you combine those both together, we still lead. If you combine math and reading together, overall growth for the state of New Mexico. And so that's an accomplishment that these students in this audience led, and so we appreciate them. And we know they don't do it alone. There's staff that support them, but there's also the families here tonight. We want to make sure that we thank you for your support of your students, for your encouragement, just getting your students to school and to help them at home, and whatever, all the different things that you do to support your students and being such high achievers. We don't thank you enough, and we want to make sure we take this opportunity to do so. And I want to ask one thing of all the students here tonight. I did the same thing with the last group. I haven't ever asked them if they actually accomplished this task, but sometime today, before you go to bed tonight, for those that are here with you today, if you could make sure that you thank them for supporting you. We don't thank our parents and our families enough for what they do for us, probably even if some of us adults don't do that enough either. But I want to make sure the students tonight, you thank your families, okay? If you'll do that, we'll give you your award. All right? So we're going to start. This actually goes a little quicker than you'd think, but we're going to do this as quickly as possible. We want to make sure every student gets recognized. We're going to call each student up by name. We're going to give them a plaque. I'm going to hand the plaque to them and shake their hand, and then they're going to go down and shake the board members' hands. If they would then, at the end, when everybody's all done, we'd like to have all the students back up for one big last picture as a whole group, and so please stick around for that. A couple of things before we get started also. If we say your name wrong, some of you have some really cool names. You all have cool names, but some of them are really cool. Just let me know when you come up, and we'll say it again, just to make sure we get it correct, if you'd like us to do so. And then also, we send the names correctly to the people that produce the plaques, but we check them, but if the name's spelled wrong, just let us know, and we'll have the company reproduce that for you. And we had one of those last time, so hopefully tonight we don't. And so if there's anything else from the board members, anybody else, I think we're ready to go. And so, Mr. Ryan?
Okay. Can you hear? Kind of? A little? I'll just use my teacher voice. So the first group of students that we're going to recognize have exceeded the expectations on the Park English Language Arts Assessment. We have Aiden Adichai. Rebecca Adcock. Charles Agüera. Azalee Anaya. Christopher Aragon. Prentice Archuleta O'Neal. Isaiah Arviso. Ibitsam Aish. Jeanette Aish. Mariah Barber. Raishan Bagay. Andre Bagay. Teyon Benson. Jamir Bayali. Zoe Bowns. Gina Catano. Marianna Chamberlain. Katrina Chamberlain. Dejean Chase. Alexis Chavez. Gwendolyn Claw. Christina Cole Roy. Lauren Kope. Raul Cornejo. J.D. Cosme. James Christler. Leslie DePauli. Angeline Dang Song. Sorry, Angeline Dang Song. Tanell Dodson. Jacob Francisco. Angel Flores. Margaret Farrell. Nicholas Gartner. Raven Gleason. Hunter Gonzalez. Peyton Gonzalez. Erin Henry. Tatiana Hernandez. Sierra Holloway. Luisa Egan. Hannah Jones. Kia Jones. Ariel Joy Josephat. Mateo Juarez. Bailey Keeler. Brooklyn King. Riley Nutson. Lalee Lawrence. Jasmine Lemon Teal. Mariah Livingston. Casey Livingston. Ian Long. Isenia Lozano. Lovera Mann. Abigail Manning. Brooklyn Manning. Joseph Manning. Stephen Marquez. Madison Martinez. Miracle Martinez. Carla Miller. Toni Mohica. Alexis Monache. Savannah Montgomery. Christopher Montoya. Hunter Morgan. William Mortensen. Peter Nguyen. Grace O'Leary. Mackenzie Ortiz. Rajoni Oiby. Cheyenne Parker. Keen Haley Pittco. Taylor Rainey. Rudy Romero. Juliana Ronco. Kiara Rutger. Mariah Rutherford. Jade Sarakino. Galalia Schink. Isabella Shirley. Sophia Schultz. Matthew Situ. Keith Smith. Kaken Setzo. Casey Taylor. Kaia Tempest. Tashina Thompson. Tanya Tolino. Janelle Torres. Haley Vargas. Aliana Vidal. Natani Yazi. Okay, this next group of students exceeded expectations on Park Math. Jerome Adrian Rayabie. Jerome Rabaya. Joseph Helfenbein. Oh, I'm sorry, Joshua, I apologize. Joshua Helfenbein. Yep, apologies. Andrew Litvicnik. Kwong Deng Nguyen. Naomi Vedeas. Okay, this next group of students exceeded expectations on the New Mexico Standards-Based Assessment in Science. Nicholas Artino. Cody Arviso. Silas Cole Roy. Angel Garcia. Roman Herrera. Alexander Keeler. Oh, Keller, I apologize. Alexander Keller. Blas Cesado IV. Bailey Thompson. This next group exceeded expectations on the New Mexico Standards-Based Assessment in Science and Park ELA. Alexandra Allen. Maria Dorazio. Gabriela Flisram. Gabriela Flisram. Patrick Johnson. Ranil Achica. Julian Rosendez Artega. Brandon Sung. Marius Williams. Devon Zipeda. Okay, this last group of students exceeded expectations on the Park Math and the Park English Language Arts Assessments. Guy Adcock. I mean, sorry, Gus Icock. Autumn Boggs. Lorenzo Diaz. Samuel Hernandez. Sabrina John. Haley Jones. Shante Scott. Scarlett Selick. Haley Situ. Mary Suhu. Sean Spohler. Cadence Upshaw. And Amy Yazi. Okay, if all of the students can please come back up to the front and bring your awards so we can take a group picture. Just really quickly, we have four students that should have been recognized, that we want to make sure that they are recognized. We have Savannah Griego. Brandy Shirley. Emilio Rosendez. Emilio. And Nancy DePauli. Thank you so much.
In Stagecoach Elementary. Ryan Hernandez. We know many will leave. A little bit later on, we do have a presentation about McKinley Academy if anybody would like to stay for that. If not, you can watch it online at our website.
Was that you knew? What? Yeah?
Hello? Test, test. Test.
The last four, did they get... Did they get... Did they get their plaques? Oh, because we have one crying. I think she's one of the ones we shook her hands last, but she's crying, I don't know. No, right. She's sitting right there.
Test, test. Test, test, test. So, see, it's that is the issue, okay? Test, test. Test, test.
Ray. Ray.
Test, test. Test.
Okay, let's, uh...
Test.
Come to order, please.
Test, test. Test.
I want to thank the parents for helping their students. And students... Thank your parents for helping you, for being there for you. And always listen to your parents. It's good that you all got your awards. Thank you so much.
Let's go talk to them, try and see.
Sorry, excuse me. Test, test, test.
So, we're gonna continue...
Test, test.
One's missing somewhere. Yeah. Okay, board members, let's resume our meeting. Let's go down to item number three. Approval of minutes from the November 5th Regular Meeting. We all have this in our board packet, so I assume you all had time to review it. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November 5th, 2018 Regular Meeting.
Okay, motion's been made by Michael Shaw to approve the meeting minutes of November 5th, 2018. Roll call, John.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
I'll abstain as well.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, thank you, board members. We approve the meeting minutes. Let's go down to item number four. Approval of consent agenda items.
Mr. President, I would like to go ahead and motion to approve, but one request I have is I know we do a lot with the National and then Youth Leadership Project. I would like to hear a report of what they have... What projects they have done with our students and the programs at maybe one of the upcoming board meetings. I'd like to know. I know they're an awesome group of individuals, and I just would like to hear a report from them, sir. But I would like to motion to approve.
Aggression. And your requests, perhaps, at the next meeting? Is that okay?
Uh, just, yeah, whenever they're ready and one of the upcoming meetings, sir. Thank you.
Aggression. Motion's been made by Priscilla Manulito to approve the consent agenda items. Any requests by her?
Roll call?
Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Thank you, board members. Let's go down to item number seven. Study circle, public comment. We have three. Kimberly. Can you all limit your comments to at least three minutes, please? Is it done? Jared?
Okay. Um, let me introduce myself. Um, Yadee Xie, Kimberly Wapunche. Uh, my clients are Tachini, Shling, Akadene, Ashish, Ching, Ashing, Keen, Anishling. Um, my daughter is seven years old. She goes to Lincoln Elementary. She is Native American with disabilities. She has speech delay, and she has autism. During my first two years, as she was going to Lincoln School, I realized the fact that the school board, I've been addressing so many issues with our native children with disabilities, had been pushed aside. And I noticed the fact that through my research, sixty percent of the Native American students here been suspended or pushed aside. And especially with parents with disabilities, they are not being really researched by the school board or not tend to listen to the parents, as well. I notice it's been an ongoing issue. Within Disability Education Improvement Act, also with what's placed with our Congress, in the No Child Left Behind Act in 2001, which was placed under Congress, I realized the fact that with this, the No Child Left Behind Act, our children have been bullied still, regardless of our race and religion and disability, and put to shame. And the fact that it's been an ongoing issue with our children, with their, you know, with their treaty rights, as well as the fact that our children's been going to school and not knowing who we are as our identity. And I addressed that to the IEP when I had my daughter's IEP this October. The fact that I wanted her to learn her native language. And I felt discriminated when I addressed that to those that were doing her IEP, saying that it's gonna be confused, but I was raised to know my language. And I felt that throughout the history of what we have been going through, I felt the fact that we still need to know who we are. And I feel really hurt, the fact that I think a lot of this is common in the schools. And it gets me frustrated. Not only that, is that the Education Board, not only that, we're fighting against land rights, not only that, we're fighting against a lot of issues in the community. And this is one where I feel like my daughter needs to know who she is, regardless if she can't speak, but she's slowly getting there. And the fact that they barely got... They barely recently started doing her IEP process in the correct manner after I hired an attorney for her. And I feel the fact that with our rights and everything that I've been learning about the educational process here, is the fact that something needs to be done. And I will keep addressing this until something happens. That's just the type of person I am. Because my daughter needs to get the right education, the right persistence and everything through who she is and history. The fact that I went to school at Gallup High School and been discriminated when also going to school in school also. And the fact that discrimination, as later on, as they turn into adult, it could turn into domestic violence, and so on and so on. So, and it also pertains to sixty percent of that comes into domestic violence and issues of that once they turn eighteen and over. And with the Disability Law Act, I feel the fact that in your states, it says that the Disability Law Act states that a person that's disability will be suspended within ten days. It says that in the student's handbook. What I feel the need that it should be researched more because of what the disability children are going through. And the fact in a way that it's not the person with the children with disability. I heard stories of a student being in front of the classroom, and then that she started getting seizures. So, it should be where the teachers need to be certified as well. And I'm really looking into this also. I will keep pushing it if I have to, because I will not let my child stand for what I've been through too. And she doesn't have a voice, and I'm her voice as well.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, all. Yeah. Mr. Foster?
Good evening, uh, the school board and the people here, parents, and our scholars that came up and got their awards here. Want to thank them for doing their, their homework. My observance on that seems like it's one percent of Navajo children, Navajo kids. But this goes back to, uh, the McKinley County Schools, their, uh, public education, uh, funding, monies that come from the state. And, um, for two years, for two years, we're still a C school. What's your, uh, what's that? What call? One observance is, uh, I, I drive, we live in West Gallup and my two grandkids, boys go to, uh, Tope-Turpin and two girls go to, uh, Chief Manualito. But my observance, when I take them to school, there's a high, uh, ratio of vehicles that are, you know, what, administrators, teachers. But the students, uh, I think the ratio, there's, there's a top heavy, you have a top heavy administrators and teachers versus the students. So therefore, the testing, the learning, the habits of the other one percent of Navajo students are getting, are not part of education. Therefore, we're still getting that C. So I think we should be a little bit better on that. It's stagnated for two years now. And then what about the other school districts in the state? Their scores have really improved. So justification for fundings, I don't know who does the audit of the schools here, McKinley County Schools, but I think one of the, uh, issue here is the students in the outlined in area. The county schools like Tohatchee, Crown Point, way out there in Puebla, Punta Taro. You know, they're not part of, uh, the direct services, what, as far as funding, the way I see it. We didn't see, I don't know, you didn't name the students of schools when they were, came up here. So I was just wondering where these students were coming from. But, um, I think that, uh, to really give the student a right, we have to give them that service correctly. And they can get their grades and then improve themselves. And then they'll be better off. So that's why I want to say, thank you.
Agreed. Yeah. Mister Foster, Mister Henry?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, Mister President, Superintendent Hyatt, and, uh, ladies and gentlemen. The last several board meetings have seen some good awards to students, some positive things highlighted. I've noticed that even though I haven't been here, because I see it in the paper or the videos. And, uh, but I want to remind us of something this evening, since this is November and it's still Native American Heritage Month for a few more days. And for some of our families, we'd say it's Native American Heritage Month every month. And for us of various backgrounds, we celebrate our identity, I hope, and know it. But I want to remind the board amidst those positive accomplishments that we celebrated again even this evening, that the history of education in the United States, and particularly the history of Indian education and Native education, is that the progress that's made in English education has come at the expense of Native education, Native language, Native cultures. And that's true also in our community to a great extent now with, with Spanish and some other, other languages that we have in our community. And so what I wanted to remind you of is that when we celebrate these accomplishments and we put up our, our scores of schools achievement in English-based subjects and in the English language, reading, writing, and so on, we don't ne- normally post the scores of how we're doing in Navajo. Other languages too, but obviously Navajo is the majority in our community, so that'll speak to. And so I wanted to share with the board something that I, the school district does this to an extent, but I'm not sure if you've all seen this, and I just wanted to make sure. This is the state law, um, Article twenty-three, that has to do with bilingual education. Some of this, I'm, I'm sure the administrators are aware, because we get some funding, it's related to this.
Thank you, Lynn.
And I'd like to just point out a couple of things here. I've underlined a few and I, I did a limited number in the time. But I just want to point out a couple of key things. Uh, this has been on the books for a while. The PEP doesn't always fully follow up and support and enforce all of these things sometimes. But at the beginning, the legislative findings that were behind this law, uh, number one is that the goals, note that the goals are for all students to become bilingual and bilingual. Not just kids who come from a background that's already bilingual, but the ideal, why not know two languages? My parents did, my grandparents did, and so on. So why not? So the goal is for all students to become bilingual and bicultural. And then recognizing down in Article F, the value of bilingualism is built into the Constitution, uh, if you've ever read that in New Mexico. And then down item H, that parents, in conjunction with teachers, are to be empowered to decide what type of bilingual multicultural ed program works best for their children and their community. So there's a parent component in this law. And then going on to the next page, which is your, the backside of your first page. Item, uh, L, just jump down to that one, that cognitive and affective, affective development of students is encouraged by using cultural linguistic backgrounds of students. And then number two, providing students with opportunities to expand their conceptual and linguistic abilities and potentials, and so on. So I, again, time is short, so I'm not gonna go through more, but I want you to, board, please be aware that, because I, I already just, you know, when a couple of you ran for board, uh, position last night, in a question in this room, there was a question about Navajo and, uh, the languages and the, the response from some of you was, should be taught at home. Well, it should be taught at home, ideally. But it's not. At this point, we've had so much shift that the school support is needed. And it's more than that, that view, because the, uh, the law itself says bilingual, bicultural education is a goal under New Mexico state law. So it's not just what our individual views are. It goes beyond that. So I wanted you to be sure to know that. And I appreciate the, the time. Uh, probably went over three minutes. Can't say much than three, but yeah.
Thank you, Lynn, for your comments and all those comments that were made. The superintendent and, um, his staff have, uh, taken notes on it. And they will be working on your concerns. Thank you. Let's go down to superintendent report. Mike?
President Long, members of the board, I've invited this evening Chairman Menos, the pres- the principal of McKinley Academy, and she's brought a lot of different people here tonight, students, staff, parents, uh, to give a presentation on status and an update on McKinley Academy. Um, so we're gonna go in the positive direction now, um, and, uh, hope to see some more of that in our public comments in the future. So Chairman, if, I'm gonna turn the time over to you. She has a presentation. We will, uh, we'll turn the lights off so you can see a little bit. If you'd like to come over this way to see the presentation, you're welcome to do so.
Okay, good evening, board members, president, superintendent. Thank you for having us. I'd like to start off by sharing a little bit background on McKinley Academy. We started out thinking we might have eighty kids. Yeah, twenty in the very beginning. And we ended up with two hundred and forty-two today. Okay? Next year's projection is closer to four hundred. We have a lot of kids wanting in. We are taking more kids for the next semester. So it, it's been a real positive, uh, force in the district. What's nice is we're servicing students from every part of McKinley County. And I'm talking Theru, Navajo Pine, Reima, uh, Crown Point's going to N T U, Sayagai's going to N T U, Tohatchee, and of course, the Gallup schools. So we have students from all over the county, anywhere there's a school bus. We even have students living in Zuni that now go over and catch the Reima bus. So we really are servicing all of our students. One thing we try to do is adapt them to the college environment and give them a jump start. So when they do graduate and go on to college, that's not a shock to them. I grew up in Theru and that was a big shock, going from Theru High School to the University of Arizona. I mean, it's a huge shock and we don't want that for our students. We want them to have some experience. We customize their education if they're wanting to go into, um, a medical track or business field. We can customize their, their classes so they can achieve that goal. Um, we've shown growth on the interim data already. We've had two interim datas. Remember, we're on a fast track. Our freshmen are taking their freshman year right now, this fall semester, and our sophomores, and then they'll become sophomores next spring. So we've had two antrums and next week, we, we start taking the park. So this truly is a fast track, accelerated course. We have other supports in place such as tutoring. Um, we offer college, uh, application services, college. We help students write their essays, FASPA, all of that as well. And we'll go ahead and start with the slides, Mister Makovich. Thank you, Margaret. She's gonna hand out a little flyer we made. So the, the, um, goals of McKinley Academy are that students will graduate with their homeschool and have a high school diploma. At the same time, our goal is that they receive an associate's degree. If we can get these kids in there for their junior and senior year, we can pretty much get them an associate's degree. And definitely if they start with us as freshmen and sophomores, uh, the odds of them getting a, an associate's degree is very high. And our third goal is they become independent learners and learn how to navigate the college system themselves. So now I'm gonna get some help from students. Xander, come on up.
Hello, good evening. Um, McKinley Academy is an early college program, and within this program, there are forty-three students. They are ranging from grades nine, ninth grade to twelfth grade. And these students come from Navajo Pine, Tohatchee, Theru, Reima, Gallup High, and Maymira. Also, Crown Point High and Ch- Chisgai. Um, as you can see by the graph, Crown Point has, oh, Crown Point has eight students. Gallup High has sixty-four. Maymira has one hundred and thirty-six. Navajo Pine has one. Reima High has five. Theru has eleven. Tohatchee has ten and Chisgai has one. And this is the dem- demographics of McKinley Academy students. Asians, there's six, I'm sorry, six point five, or eight point five percent Asians. One point three Blacks. One, or fourteen point eight Caucasians. And twenty-two percent Hispanics and Native are forty-three point four, fifty-three point four percent, I'm sorry. And also, there's sixty-one percent ma- females in McKinley Academy and thirty-nine percent males. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Danny Makovich. I'm the counselor with McKinley Academy. And I just want to talk a little bit about our, uh, application process. As Ms. Menos mentioned earlier, we are taking applications right now. Uh, we are planning to accept, uh, a few new students for the spring. And then we will be accepting, um, lots of new students to start next school year. Uh, so just a few things up here on the slide here, uh, who can apply. Students must live within McKinley County. Uh, this coming, uh, year, we're gonna have students apply. Uh, if you're an eighth grader and you would like to join us as a ninth grader, you're gonna apply in January. And upperclassmen, sophomores, juniors, and going to be seniors will, um, apply a little bit after that. They're gonna apply in January and February as well. Uh, freshmen and seniors, this is a unique piece just because of how, uh, we run students through our program. If you are coming to us as a freshman or a senior, we want you to come at the beginning of the school year. Our freshmen enter, uh, kind of a rigid cohort where we are gonna get them the ninth grade and the tenth grade core curriculum in one year. So it's accelerated, but it is a necessity that they, that they come at the beginning. Uh, we couldn't start them midstream. So we're really gonna push to try to get our eighth graders, um, a, a lot of new eighth graders coming to us next year to start their ninth grade year. They're gonna be able to receive accelerated curriculum, uh, next year for a full year and then hopefully move right into college courses for three, four years. There's a few steps to apply. We have a one-page application. I think we have a few of those here tonight, if anybody would like to take one with them. You fill out that application. Uh, if you are from out of district, we'd ask that you provide us some transcripts. If you're in district, you can get those, uh, as part of your application. Uh, freshmen, we ask that, uh, they write a letter, an essay themselves, and also give one recommendation letter. We're looking for students that, um, are gonna be successful in this, uh, adult, post-secondary environment. So we're not just looking exactly at test scores. We're not looking just at GPA. We're not looking at what school you come from. We're looking at the whole student. And we're looking, um, at students who we feel are a good and can be successful and that can help advance their, uh, post-secondary opportunities. Uh, upperclassmen, part of their application procedure is gonna be to take the Accuplacer exam. The Accuplacer is the entrance exam at U N M Gall, so they will fill out the application. They will take the Accuplacer exam and that will tell us where they place when it comes to college classes. Uh, students that we've seen come to us this year have done awesome. We are very, very proud of them. The huge majority of those students have placed into college classes so that they get dual credit opportunity, college credit and high school credit at the same time. One last piece, uh, for the application process is an interview. Uh, usually it's Ms. Menos, myself, um, if anybody else is available to sit down and interview the student and the family together. Because again, we wanna, uh, let, we wanna see if they feel like they would be a good fit in that environment and we wanna see if we think they would be a good fit. So, you know, we're not just looking at, at data. We're looking at the whole ch- whole child and, uh, trying to find people and students that are gonna be successful.
Hi, my name is Margaret Carl and um, I'm a freshman at McKinley Academy and two Fridays ago, my friend spoke about me and said, will you please do this presentation? I'm like, yes, yes, I'm ready. Um, McKinley Academy has lots to offer. Uh, because of our dual credit courses, you do take both college and high school classes. Um, we do offer full transportation to and from school, um, by bus. Or for more county areas, we have, uh, suburban-like vehicles. Uh, we offer breakfast and lunch free to students, um, which is served in Gurley Hall and in Calvin Hall. Because we have, uh, because we are located on a college campus, we do have more responsibility with our class schedules and our work. So, I mean, getting in and on time and keeping up on assignments. Um, we also have, uh, gate and IEP resources for the, for the students who need them, and that is partially the And that is partially the responsibility of Makovich. Um, we also have tutoring services with U N M and with our own program. Also, we do have our own free tuition books and supplies provided to all students. We also get uh the supplies of laptops, printers, and calculators to all students um who get them to, who get to keep them throughout the year. Um, even though we are separate from our home high schools where we will receive our diploma, we are still connected to them. We are, unlike middle college, we do uh apply with class rankings, sports, uh dances, clubs, uh activities, and our standardized testing.
Uh, hello, my name is Darian Rogers, and uh I am a freshman at the academy. Um, I am here to ex- explain to you, um, I would say probably the most difficult part of about this whole uh academy, which is the freshman part. Uh, what we do is, of course, we sta- we attend school Monday through Friday, just like any other freshman. Uh, we follow the G C- G M C S calendar. We have break when they do. We get days off when they do, mostly, mostly. Um, we follow a block schedule. We have four core classes and one college elective. Um, we also have an accelerated curri- curri- curriculum, uh except Algebra One, which is a year-long class. And um during uh during our fall semester, we take care of our freshman year. And during the spring semester, we take care of our sophomore year. Um, and we can take one college class each semester as an elective, which is pretty, it's pretty good. Um, a day in the life of a freshman student, it's it's pretty long. Uh, we we arrive between eight and eight-thirty, uh either by bus, by car, by however we get to school. And um as soon as we get here, we have breakfast waiting for us. Uh, we, after breakfast, we start two cor- two morning uh courses. Um, after we have a thirty-minute lunch break, and then we take care of the other two core classes. At the end of the day, we take care of our last elective cu- uh college course. Um, on Fridays, we have early release. Uh, we have a shortened, we have shortened our um, we don't have our elective course that day, but we have our four core classes, which are shortened. And um, at the end of the day, we just go home. It's the best part of the day.
Hi, I'm Raven, and I'm a sophomore at um McKinley Academy, then or Gallup High. Um, first off, I'd like to say thank you, um, the board members, for this amazing opportunity because that's really what it is. Um, we're able to follow the U N M calendar, which of course means less breaks, but we do get Friday off, which is another great thing, 'cause I'm able to work that day, and I know a lot of other students are able to appreciate and see that. Um, and then we also have an amazing support group, um with um the McKinley Academy teachers and also U N M teachers, because they make sure each and every one of us has an individual schedule. And this allows us to take as many um credit hours, as many classes as we would like to take. Um, we also have, they they built us up to succeed, so we have access to online courses, which lets us go to Albuquerque campus or Gallup campus, wherever we need our classes. And then we also have tutoring. And um I'm also really excited about this. We'll be able to take summer classes as well. And so here are some of the popular courses that um McKinley Academy students can take. Uh, we have political sciences. Um, I know I've heard a lot of good reports about anthropology. Um, sciences, math, um accelerated composition, um public speaking, and um a lot of art classes that are um geared to many of the students.
So when it all comes down to it, why do we have McKinley Academy? We have McKinley Academy to give our students a jump start on college, and in return, it helps the families out. Students are prepared. It reduces the amount of time a student is in college to get their bachelor's degree. And it ensures student success at future universities. They already know what it's like to go to college. And last but not least, it's less student debt on the family and students. So it has a lot of great things. This is our staff. We are a small staff. You can see we have um four freshman teachers, two upperclassman teachers, um one full-time and two half-time gate teachers, a secretary, counselor, and principal. So we are pretty small for the number of students we're serving. And here's the students who helped out with the presentation. I just wanna say thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to open this school. I think it's been great for our community, and we're all open for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Questions, board members, comments?
Ms. Munoz, I have a quick question. Can you give us an idea of the acceptance rate for incoming students, whether it be freshmen or or any grade?
I don't have the data right here, but I would guess in the spring, it was probably about eighty percent.
So there's definitely, I mean, there was some selection that went through, you know, went on?
Yeah, you know, we we had some students who came to us who had twenty absences and Ds and Fs.
In their prior school?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
But that, I'll add, that doesn't disqualify them.
Sure.
We look at everything with that student to see, this, they may be missing school 'cause they're not challenged for some reason, or and so any student can apply. Um, and those conversations in the interview are about whether it's a it's not about whether the student should or shouldn't go, it's about whether they're a good fit for the program and good for them. Um, some students I know that we interviewed that we just felt that they, and the families felt they needed one more year before they apply again, um and kind of build up on some of their skills. But again, this is, opportunity is open to anybody, any student in the whole entire county. With transportation, food, funding, and all the supplies that these students talked about, to ma- to help them be successful. So it doesn't matter what economic status their their family's in, doesn't matter where they live. It's not an elite, elitist school. It's a opportunity for any student in McKinley County to have the opportunity to challenge themselves with dual credit and have a goal of an associate's degree before they graduate.
I've I've heard, like, from some of the, I don't know, like, I I I know a few kids that go there that are freshmen, and they talk about how dang difficult it is, which I, when I hear that, I'm, I just think to myself, great. I'm I'm really, you know, that makes me happy. It really is, you know, challenging them, it sounds like. Um, and and but with with that, I was curious if you, any kind of ballpark of, if there's any kind of washout rate, if there's kids that are just like, man, this is just too much, too much for me to jam. I mean, especially the freshman jamming two years of high school into into one year.
Well, we've experienced that this first semester. We have had a total of eight or nine kids who either we engaged them and their families in conversation, or they approached us saying, I don't think this is the right time for me. I really appreciate the opportunity, but maybe, maybe I need to go back to my home school and try it again later. And we appreciate that. Um, you know, some parents have felt like the rigor was very high, and they don't have time in their family to dedicate towards studying and and being there without, you know, being absent. You know, so I would say out of two hundred and fifty kids, if we had eight kids leave, that's that's pretty good. And they did transfer back to their home schools. One student actually left because he was leaving the country.
I'm I'm, I mean, I'm happy to hear that there's an open dialogue to make sure that it's a good fit and that, you know, there's a happy medium between kids being, you know, really challenged and 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 making sure that they're, you know, that they're successful.
Okay, do you have any questions, board members?
Yes, I do, sir. Um, thank you for the presentation. Um, I'm very glad that we got to hear this information and the updates on on our 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 academy. Um, I talked to Mr. Hyatt earlier, and one of the concerns that I had um was, you know, our our middle col- our middle academy students um not, not really being uh not really being involved or uh into our, into their regular um classes. And I use my son as an example. Um, you know, I mean, the, and I just wanted to know if there is something that can be done to continue to inform um the schools that they're going to that they are, that is their home school. Because I think because of the academy, they kind of get disconnected, and they're being forgotten of activities or, you know, different things that are happening within the school that they can still be a part of, that you listed. Um, just one in particular was homecoming. The other one um that came up recently was the pageant, a pageant that happened in our school that the academy students did not, were not aware of, because they're not, they only go to the school to catch the bus or something. And I think they're, they kn- that that little disconnect there um needs to be, you know, so so our kids are not left out so much. Um, the other concern that I had was um the student, the senior student of the month. And with Mr. Hyatt explaining everything that there will be, that that will be fixed, I think that really helps um ease a lot of our parents' mind, because I know there's that, uh again, we need to help our students in having that recognition of them being a s- uh of the ro- Rotary Club or whatever it may be, that that really helps in a lot of their scholarships, and it looks fabulous on a transcript for college. So those were just my two. I don't know if you want to add to the comments that Mr. Hyatt um informed me about, but I just wanted to bring that up in for your awareness that there are those two smaller concerns that we that we did have.
Thank you. Yes, we are aware. Um, that's one of our obstacles, is we reach out to the various high schools. And I can tell you that Tohatchee High and Maimara High are probably the best at getting us information. And we have a bulletin board, and anytime we get anything, we post it. We ask them to send us flyers, posters, announcements, and we try to get that out to the students. But we haven't had a lot of success. And I I know um Mr. Bell sent out several emails asking principals to send us that. So we're still working on that, and I think eventually that'll be smoother. It's it's kind of new to everybody. But um, yeah, we're really promoting that the schools include our students, because they do belong to those home schools.
And one last comment. Um, thank you, Mr. Munio- Ms. Munoz, for that. Um, you know, my 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 son is in the academy, and one of the things, I I can just hear him still um when I told him, this is something that we really want you to do, and I really encourage you to do it. And he was excited, and then like a week before school was gonna start, he was like, Mom, I'm gonna miss my friends. I'm gonna, I don't know if I should do this. I think I better not. How about next year, maybe my senior year? And, you know, he was starting to backtrack. His first day he attended, he came home with a huge smile. And he was like, this is the best decision I, that I'm glad sometimes you force me to make, but it's always for the best interest. And he goes, and he goes, now he loves the academy. He loves um going to school there. I think it's a, I see a more independence in him. And, you know, the, I know there's times when he has to buckle down, but I can see more of him saying, no, I have to stay and do my homework. Or no, I have to do this with, to his friends. And I think that's building that character that we all wanna see in our in our students. And I'm just so thankful for it, and I know that he's got big goals for himself, and he's fulfilling it with 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 the academy. So thank you to you and your staff. I really appreciate it from my son, from my family, and from the district of what you guys are doing. And I think our staff at the McKinley County will need to grow, because I know the word is getting out there to a lot of the students, and we're gonna have to get more staff to fill those positions and um because I think more kids are gonna join. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. President, um, I just wanted to thank um Sharman and her um her group for coming and giving this presentation. Um, it's really fantastic to hear some of the things that are going on there. And I really, truly um was glad to hear that um one of the students is coming up and talking about support. 'Cause I think support is very important at that stage when it's such fast pace. Our children need that support behind them to encourage them, to make sure that they're on track and and they're fulfilling what they need to fulfill. Um, and I'm just hearing everything. I'm very excited to see our first graduates out of McKinley Academy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
One quick comment. Thank you to the students that came tonight also, and parents and staff members. We appreciate that. Um, it's good to see uh your support and also your hard work in this program for for McKinley County. So this is an exciting opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Munoz, for the opportunity to work with you to get this going, and it's been great.
Yes, thank you. To your staff and also uh the staff of our school districts that are here. Thank you. And Gerald's the only general that's here. So, yeah, so Grant's his favorite son, I understand. So thank you so much for being here. Mike Long?
President Long, members of the board, our next presentation, um it's a quick one, a few minutes. I've asked Mr. Horacek, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, to talk about one uh piece of our work with respect to principals, working with teachers, teaching with the principals, and improving uh the teacher craft of educating our students. And this is a a piece that we we refer to as observation feedback, coaching and feedback. Uh, as you know, and I mentioned this before in board meetings, that we are, we have, we have reached an expectation where we expect our principals to be focused on eighty percent, or using eighty percent of their time focused on instructional leadership and about twenty percent on managerial-type things. In the past, I think, even in my career, sometimes it was reversed, where you're spending eighty percent on managerial duties and twenty percent on instruction. And we need to make sure that our teachers are getting the support that they need, and that principals are involved in helping teachers become better and then education becomes better. That's just one piece of a host of many other things that we're doing instructionally in our school district that's helped us, helped us with our growth. Not to say that we don't have areas that we continually need to improve in, uh but the data speaks for itself. Some people come and talk about things that are not factual, and there's a level of ignorance at times and a level of pessimism that is unfortunate. Sometimes we hear that from our local tabloid and other things in our newspapers. Some 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 newspapers have been great and have focused on celebrating student success, celebrating them. Because students hear this. You're always gonna be negative and pessimistic and uh feel victimized. You're gonna miss all the opportunities and the optimistic things that are out there in our school district and celebrating our students. We need to celebrate them more instead of always being negative. So I'll let Mr. Horacek talk a little bit about uh observation feedbacks and the data associated with that. Mr. Horacek?
So what I have on the board, the screen, um is when our principals do walkthroughs, it's an online version. So I'm not gonna go into detailing it, but every school, elementary, middle school, high, they're all in here. You click on a school name, it takes the principals and their other administrative staff to this really cool website. So when they do walkthroughs with teachers, it's actually done on the computer. And when they're done, they click a button, and it sends that feedback to the teachers. And about three years ago, I believe, the principals were asking for something like this, 'cause they were doing it paper-pencil. Um, and they just didn't capture what they wanted to capture. So I just want you to know it's housed on a district Google site that we have, and that's how we do it. Um, and so it's just called the Google Classroom Walk Through, Walk Through Tool. We do bring in a group of principals. We have thirty-four, so we don't bring them all in. But each year, we bring about seven of them in, and the DI sitting in the back there, and Carrie's here, Wade and Rachel, you all know them. Um, they do a focus group with the principals to determine what goes into this tool. Um, because they're the practitioners in the classroom, they typically know what's best. So we bring them in. We have some parameters and guidelines. And then they have to fit within that, and then they make recommendations on what they want to go into the actual tool. Um, this is non-evaluative, so when they do classroom walkthroughs, it is a separate piece from the N M Teach um evaluation system. What is it called, Oasis? It's a separate piece. This is all to improve instruction. It's just as simple as that. It's about improving classroom instruction. And when you look at the pink lines, this tool, the way we do things, And when you look at the pink lines, this tool, the way we do things, has a piece in helping students achieve better academically by being in the classroom. We use the NMTCH rubric. So there's a rubric with the, the state evaluation tool. It's called the NMTCH rubric. We use that within this document so that we're not sending teachers a mixed message of your evaluation says this and the walkthrough says something different. They, they both say the same thing. Once again, it's online. It provides written feedback. As soon as they're done with the walkthrough, they click a button and it sends the teacher a PDF of exactly what the principal wrote. And then at some point in the future, um, they typically sit down with that principal, and they have a conversation about what they saw. And so the teacher and the principal, or it could be the assistant principal, it could be a school leader intern, um, it could be an instructional coach, they would, they'd get in a room, and they talk together about what they saw, and they try to create action steps so that the next time the teacher teaches a lesson, it's better for kids, it's better instruction for students, to help improve, uh, improve academics. And I just want to give you some figures on how we've used the tool since we first had it. So in 2016-17, it's the first year we used this tool, all the administrators at all thirty-four school sites had a combined four thousand five hundred and seventy-three walkthrough, walkthroughs. We have a nice little, everything that is in here, we see. The data that's tabulated, we see comments, we see what's going on in the schools. So there were four thousand five hundred and seventy-three walkthroughs in 1617. In the year we just finished, 1718, there were six thousand and nineteen. And that's really an increase because of the, the commitment by teachers and principals and central office to make sure we're using the tool effectively. In the current school year, eighteen nineteen, so once again, we did five thousand, four thousand five hundred and seventy-three in 1617. We did six thousand and nineteen last year, and already this year, as of this morning, the principals and other administrators at their sites have done four thousand and seventy. So if I project that out, we would have, um, about ten thousand five hundred walkthroughs by the end of the year in May because we've really done three months' worth of walkthroughs, and we're already at four thousand and seventy, and we have about five more months to go. So it puts us at about ten thousand. What that means is that principals, assistant principals, et cetera, are in classrooms, helping teachers do a better job of teaching the curriculum. I had a conversation with Ms. Manuelito, I think, before the meeting started tonight, just about how powerful our YAG is, our curriculum I talked about, I think, last year. But we're making sure they're teaching what kids are-
Can you explain what the YAG is?
Pardon me?
For the audience, can you explain what the YAG is?
It's called a Year at a Glance. The YAG is called a Year at a Glance. And it's really the standards that students should be taught in ELA, math, science. I think we even do social studies and some electives. But it's what standard students should be taught throughout the year so that when they take that year-end test called the PARC, um, they have a better opportunity for success. Because that's what we really owe to students. Um, and once again, I'll, I'll, I'll speak to the data and the number of kids you saw here tonight and three weeks ago, you re- recognize students from other parts of the district. Uh, but it's teaching those standards that students need to know to be successful in life and to be successful on their assessment. So we, we do that, and we make sure it's aligned. It's just better for students. And that's why you see, a piece of it's why you see the success we've had academically in this district over the last three years. Any questions?
Questions? Board members, comments?
At least one? Sure.
Uh, Gerald, is there, this actually isn't much of a question for me, but is there a way that you could maybe a- after our board meeting, i- in a few minutes, if you could make yourself available or maybe help out some of the parents that might be here that might have questions for you just about the curriculum and some of the- I mean, there, there's some real exciting stuff that you've explained to us, you know, kind of, you know, behind the scenes about the curriculum and the standardization of the curriculum that, that I, I think is real important. And, and, and just for any of the parents, if they have any questions for you about some of the underlying data and what it means specifically for their kids, I just, that, that was all. That was all.
Yeah, you may think, one last thing is, I think it's important when we talk about the, the Year at a Glance and teaching certain standards during certain quarters. Thirty-two percent, about thirty-two percent of our kids are mobile in this district. So that means almost a third, right, are moving in and out of schools in our district, or moving out of the district and coming in. And so we have a lot of kids that do move from the city to the county, and the county back to the city. Well, when you have a common curriculum that third-grade teachers or ninth-grade teachers should be using, when those students transfer within our district, and it's typically poor students and minority students. Well, when there's a standard curriculum, they're not gonna miss anything. Because when they go from Crown Point in seventh grade to Gallup Mid in seventh grade, the teachers should be teaching the same material. How they teach it is not, we don't get involved in that, but what they teach, we do, and that matters to kids. That's one of the most important things we can do is to level that playing field for the students. So.
I could not add, coupled with the other things we've done with, with our YAG or our curriculum, embedding cultural-relevant materials and resources for our teachers. So this is kind of more of a connection to what they're learning. It's not just about the math and science and the curriculum. But it's about having a connection. So when a teacher opens up our curriculum, which is unlike probably most, if not any, in all our state, they are, they are receiving resources that are tailored to cultures that are in our communities, whether it's Native American, or even Filipino, or whether it's Hispanic, or Anglo, or whatever it might be. Student, teachers are, are, those resources are more available for students because we're making it easier and easier for them, and helping them and teaching them on how to use that in their instruction. So that connection between what's being taught and the student is, that connection can be stronger. So I just want to add that piece.
And this is just what the tool looks like. It's just, so you click on all these buttons, um, come down here, and you rate where the teacher is, and then you can put comments in. And then that is all electronically done and taken care of. And for teachers and principals, it's really awesome.
One of the things that I wanted to add was, um, I think my microphone died. I, I asked a lot of questions to our staff in our area. One of the things-
May I say one last thing about, I met with a focus group, I'll make it quick, but I met with a folk, with a focus group of juniors at Miami High, and the majority of them were Native American students. And I wanted to ask them about the culturally relevant materials we have embedded in our curriculum. And so, and if their teachers were using them. And these particular students, their teachers were using the culturally relevant materials. And I asked them how that made them feel. And they said, it's really nice to read stories, poems, et cetera, about what my home life is like, about who I am. And the nice thing they also said was, but we wanna, we wanna hear stories about, um, Hispanic culture and Caucasian culture and Asian culture, et cetera. So they wanted to be a diverse group of readings. Um, but the power in that little focus group that I did for forty-five minutes in Miami High really spoke to, we need to make sure we're using those stories that are in there, that are there for the teachers to use, and we need to do a better job at the district level to make sure we're training teachers to access them. And that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? None. Okay. Thank you, Gerald. Yeah, got his own fan club, huh? Next we go to, uh, board reports. Any reports from the board members?
Mr. President, I would like to tell you about the open house for the New Mexico School of Death that I attended on November thirteenth, eighth, this year. It was really a great attendance. They had, I met, uh, the president, the superintendent from the School of Death in Santa Fe, a number of, uh, students, parents, and, uh, I think the New Mexico School of Death preschool here in McKinley Academy, oh, well, in Gallup McKinley County Schools is a great asset for, for us. And, um, I was glad I could attend. And then another thing on notice and communications, um, on January eleventh, the Aquatic Board will meet at nine AM here at the Student Center. Nine AM.
Okay. Is that it, Michael? Okay. Any other reports? Or reports?
None.
Koshin, at ten. The, number three under reports is pretty much just notices and communication. I think you can read those on your own. Let's go down to new business number six. Uh, Mike?
Yeah, this one works better. So thank you, President Long. President Long, members of the board. Uh, we are coming to our last item, which are action items. As you recall, a couple of years ago, the state legislature, uh, felt that, I'm talking as a whole, felt, along with the PED, felt that it was okay to swipe cash from students, uh, to cover for their problems in funding, uh, the state. And so they swiped, um, one point six eight million dollars from GMCS. Also understood that there was impact aid dollars in those monies that were swept, which is another issue. On June twenty-eighth, now, understanding also there were some districts that didn't get any money swept, but, uh-
Mike, are you saying swept or swiped?
They swiped, took, grabbed, covered up, you know, holes somewheres for their use. I don't know, whatever you want to say. Depends however you want to, whatever you want to call it. Uh, we lost one point six million dollars, and the state returned four hundred ninety-four thousand dollars of that to us this year. And it happened at the end of the fiscal year, last year, in, I think, June. Uh, and so a- at that particular time, it was too late to budget. We'd already covered our year. And, uh, we have that money here now, and we were trying to figure out what we could do with that. We do have a lot of funds, to take care of needs. And you know the list of things we've done differently to support students. Increases in pay, uh, support teachers in the county, and do some, do some different things, and trying to support our sports programs, et cetera, our academic programs. With this money, uh, as my executive leadership team got together, uh, given the success, uh, that we have had with our staff and our students this past year, uh, we, we want to keep as many of our staff members as possible. We have a high turnover rate, just due to, not everybody can live in Crown Point, New Mexico. I could, but a lot of people, some people can't, or say, yeah, Burema or wherever it might be. Sometimes people have a tough time living in Gallup. But we, we felt that it would be good to, at this time of year especially, uh, to give a one-time addenda, uh, to our staff in the form of five hundred dollars each. And to, to give some of that money back to them. As we know, our educators are well-underpaid. An average in the state of New Mexico, we've come a long ways in increasing their pay. Uh, we still have a, a ways to go, and our sufficiency lawsuit will help in that effort. Um, but we're proposing that, and proposing to the board this evening, that we use these funds along with some other funds. We are fiscally sound right now with our impact aid dollars and other dollars that have come in and our fiscal responsibility. Um, and so we're gonna add some more funds to that so that five hundred dollars can be given to all of our approximately sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred employees in the district. And that is the proposal for this evening. It'll be a one-time. Um, the, the employee has to stay with us the entire year. They can't leave from now until the end of their contract, or that money will be taken back. So we're calling it a retention addenda, uh, and it's for your approval. If you have any questions. As you know, Javana's not here tonight. Uh, so if you want a real, real technical question, you'll have to wait. Um, we could postpone this vote till later, but I'm sure that staff would appreciate it if you do vote on it to have it before, uh, their holiday season.
Mr. Hyatt, without getting too technical, does this, uh, does this one-time addendum, does it, does it, uh, affect at all like our, our cash balance, like our rainy day fund, any, any of that, those protective measures that we have for, you know, for our school district?
President, President Long, Mr. Mortensen, it does not affect our, our reserves. Those reserves are there, and we have to ask, actually ask the state to use those reserve funds. And so this, this money is operational dollars that we have that are available. And so this is what we're proposing. So it's not coming out of the reserve fund.
I would like to make a motion.
Question?
I, I just want to ask a quick question. I'm sorry, can you take off? Uh, so this one is for all staff, and then I'm also asking for the McKinley Academy staff. So if that includes them?
It includes every contract person in the schools of this district except myself. So whether you are a bus driver, or custodian, or teacher, or, and not board, not board members either. Contracted salaried, uh, employees, which most of our employees are. Uh, it wouldn't, it wouldn't go to coaches, obviously, or club sponsors or things like that. A lot of those people do work for us. They are salaried. This would be a one, one-time five hundred dollars.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the one-time retention addenda to all GMCS employees in the amount of five hundred dollars, which will exclude the superintendent.
And board members. Uh, motion's been made. Michael Shaw. Roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell? Ms. Manuelito?
Yes, and I would like to welcome that.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes, and, uh, tell them this is an early Christmas gift from the board and the superintendent.
I will send that out in the morning, from your lips to my email.
Oh, yeah.
And Gerald. It's from Gerald, too.
Yeah, and, uh, board members, yeah, thank you very much for the work this evening. Uh, we're done with our business. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn for the evening.
Okay. Motion's been made by Chris Mortensen for adjournment. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Mitchell? Ms. Manuelito? Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Seven forty-eight.
Okay, thank you. We're adjourned, seven forty-eight.